Tonight, we're going to begin with our first work session, talking about the American Rescue Plan. And as you all know, back in March of 2021, Congress enacted or adopted this new plan of about 1.9 million, excuse me, $1.9 trillion package. Aubrey, if you want to go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint. Thank you. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So what we'd like to do tonight is take you all through kind of the thought process that we've had over these past few months in creating a framework for how the American Rescue Plan funding will be spent here in the city of Hillsborough. And I think to provide some context, we're going to talk about the different areas that the American Rescue Plan really targeted. And you can see these areas here. There's the individual and household relief. There's business relief, there's schools, health and pandemic, and then state and local assistance, which is where we come in. We learned that we would be getting about $18 million over two years. We have received our first tranche of money, about $9 million. We've worked over these past few months trying to tie how we spend that money to current council priorities. And I believe we've come up with a great framework and how to do that. So we'll go through that tonight as well. And with that, one also thing I wanted to mention, in addition to tying it to council goals and priorities, we've also been very deliberate in ensuring that we use equity as a guiding principle as we make these recommendations to the city council. So with that, Aubrey, you can go to the next slide, and I will turn it over to Andy Smith.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Andy Smith, Government Relations Manager. So I'm going to go through my parts, the next seven slides. I'm going to go through the first five slides pretty quickly and then try and spend a little bit more time on the last two slides. And so, starting here with the individual relief component of the American Rescue Plan. Bottom line, there are a lot of resources flowing into our community, into communities across the nation. And we really want to understand the impacts of that so that our plan can be as targeted and strategic as possible. Although none of the individual relief funding passes through our organization, part of our role is to amplify that these programs exist and to help navigate our residents to where they can access these resources. So, for example, rent and utility assistance. That will be available through the American Rescue Plan to Oregonians and administered by the state of Oregon. That's on top of rent and utility assistance that's been approved as early as the end of last year through the Consolidated Appropriations Act. Not to mention previous rounds of rent and utility assistance by the CARES Act and through state appropriations early on in the pandemic. So we really want to help our community access these funds and make sure that we're doing what we can to reduce barriers to community utilization. With the understanding that the greater access that our community has to these funds and the more that they actually access it, the better positioned that they will be and our community will be to weather the ongoing acute impacts of COVID-19 and also the better position that we will be as a community to recover from COVID-19. Next slide, please. And so turning now to the business relief component of the American Rescue Plan. So similar to support for individuals and families, there are significant resources in the plan to support businesses. And as you can see, the American Rescue Plan provides funding for businesses in a few areas here. It provides paid leave and this time it's not just for quarantine and isolation and recovery from COVID-19 itself, but it's also so that employees can get vaccinated. It provides funding to employers to help retain employees and then it provides additional funding to a program that we're all pretty familiar with by now that was created in the CARES Act, the Paycheck Protection Program. Next slide, please. And continuing on the topic of business relief, also included is new and targeted relief for some of the nation's hardest hit industries, restaurants and venues. And now, this is a little bit different from the CARES Act. The CARES Act provided business relief, but it did so in a much more broad way. Now that the American Rescue Plan is shifting to more targeted investments in industries that have suffered the most nationwide. And I'll just note that this is separate from programs like the State Landlord Compensation Fund, both the program the state has for residential landlords and the program that the state has for commercial landlords. Those programs at the state level can likely be accessed by restaurants and venues as well. But this is new funding on the way to support some of the nation's hardest hit industries. And, you know, along the same lines as assistance to individuals and families, you know, we have a role here to make sure that our business community is aware of these resources and that we're doing what we can to help our business community access these resources for the same reasons. Next slide, please. And so, we also want to be aware of other direct resources in the American Rescue Plan that are available to our local partners like our schools. And in the American Rescue Plan, there was a sizable appropriation for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESR. In Oregon, that means about $1.12 billion in ESR funding is on its way to the state. That's shared among school districts in Oregon. The uses for that funding are very broad and flexible and very much forward looking. They are not limited only to the specific and acute impacts of COVID-19, but they're very much intended to help school districts come out of COVID-19 in a stronger position than they were when COVID-19 started. And so, we're going to be wanting to talk to our school district about how we can work together to leverage each other's resources where our priorities and goals and needs overlap. And I know that conversation has already started. Next slide, please. And so, there's also significant resources on the way for critical public health needs. And even though as a city, we may not have a direct role in most of this area, we want to be aware of these resources and understand them so that we can amplify and support the use of these resources in the community. We've taken note of the funding available in the Emergency Connectivity Fund as it relates to our interest as a city in increasing community broadband access. And I'll also note the bullet below that, which shows that additional support is on its way for homelessness, rent, mortgage and utility assistance. And again, just wanting to understand the scope of all of these resources to help make our plan targeted and strategic and to avoid duplicating efforts by investing where there is existing funding available in the community. Next slide, please. Okay, so turning now to the allowable uses for the American Rescue Plan funds. Treasury guidance was issued a few weeks ago. It's about 150 pages long and there's back sheets and summaries and all kinds of stuff, but it's a relatively complex document, but also provides a lot of flexibility to recipients. And what I'd start by sharing is just kind of going back to the CARES Act, and the American Rescue Plan is not the CARES Act. The CARES Act was very much about mitigating damage and providing immediate relief to individuals, families and businesses. The American Rescue Plan, by contrast, is, it also is about emergency relief to individuals, businesses and families and those other categories that we just discussed. But it's also very much forward looking and perspective in nature. It's about coming out of COVID and being a stronger community, a stronger state and a stronger nation than we were when COVID started. So unlike the CARES Act, which required funding to be allocated by the end of 2020, the American Rescue Plan provides several years to allocate funding, which gives us time to plan and to develop a vision to improve people's lives and create a stronger and more resilient community. The statutory uses of American Rescue Plan funding are very broad and the Treasury guidance builds upon the flexibility in the American Rescue Plan. And while there is broad flexibility for recipients, eligible uses all require some kind of a connection to COVID-19. That being sort of the key to eligible uses. The Treasury guidance further communicates what could be viewed as national priorities within the guidance. And it does so through statements of intent, non-exhaustive lists of eligible uses, and in many cases, by presuming that certain uses are eligible when provided in qualified census tracts or when provided to disproportionately impacted communities. So we do expect Treasury to continue issuing updated rolling guidance in the coming weeks and months in an effort to clarify some of the common questions that recipients are raising related to eligible uses. So we'll probably get some more specificity on some of the ambiguities that are in the guidance in the coming weeks and months. But I'll note for now that the categories in the framework that we're looking at tonight that Rahim will be going through, those categories in our framework plan are all generally allowable uses under the Treasury guidance. While the specific funding choices, though, will need to be analyzed against the guidance before being finalized. And I know that we are putting a process in place to ensure that that happens. Next slide, please. And so, turning now to the state and local assistance category. And so, just right at the top of the slide, $360 billion was included in the American Rescue Plan for state and local assistance. And then, kind of going all the way down to the bottom, you can see in the lower left, the state of Oregon is set to receive $2.65 billion. And then, on the right side at the bottom, in our community, Washington County is set to receive $117 million. And as Robbie mentioned at the outset of the presentation, the city of Hillsborough will receive $18 million over the next year. But back on that $360 billion number, I just want to emphasize that that is right around one-sixth of the entire American Rescue Plan, the state and local aid. You know, the CARES Act contains state and local assistance, but outside of very large cities and counties, local governments were generally left out of direct funding unless a state decided to share its resources with local governments within it. In Oregon, outside of Washington and Multnomah Counties and the city of Portland, no local government received direct federal funding. The American Rescue Plan guarantees that every city and county will receive funding, either directly from Treasury or for non-entitlement cities via the states. State and local governments are very much a cornerstone component of the American Rescue Plan and are critical on delivering on the intent of the Act. So over the last few slides, we covered how the American Rescue Plan provides relief and recovery funding to individuals and families, businesses, schools, healthcare and public health. State and local assistance can be used for all of those purposes as well. In fact, the Treasury guidance, the eligible use categories are generally framed around those uses. And I think that that highlights how important this funding is, state and local aid, to fully delivering on the intent of the American Rescue Plan. It's an opportunity for state and local governments to fill the gaps that remain in the context of the broad national response based on localized circumstances and local community needs. And I know, as Rahim takes you through some of our framework plan, you'll get a sense of how we're going to be trying to understand what that looks like so we can tailor our plan to the gaps that exist in our community related to the broad national priorities. And that will help us play our role to support the national recovery by making sure that our community has what it needs to recover, to be relieved from the immediate impacts of the pandemic, but also to have a strong recovery from the pandemic and hopefully come out of this stronger than we went into it. And so, with that, I'll turn it back over to Rahim, who will talk about some of the components of the vision that we are building through this planning process. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Aubrey, could we go to the next slide, please? So Andy kind of walked you through, you know, the big picture. How is the, what was the ARPA put together for? Well, I'll get into more specificity on how we will use that funding, but I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking through this graphic a little bit. So the way we've set things up for, as our approach, is we're looking at things from a city-funded programs and specific projects that support those programs. And there's a framework behind all of this to support it. But our plan is informed by, obviously, our city council's equity statement. In addition to all the ARPA guidance that we have to follow, there are other things that we can tailor our plan to meet. And a lot of these things are the same. A lot of the requirements within the ARPA guidance are similar to the things we highlight in our equity statement. Some of the goals that we went through in 20, during our 2021 priority setting. But the other big part of this too is, we don't want to go in through this whole process just assuming we know what all the needs are. So we want to go through a heavy community engagement process in the beginning rather than towards the end once we've already defined every single project and every single scope. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. And then Andy talked a little bit about the gaps. So I use an example of somebody who's trying to qualify for utility assistance. If for some reason, they do not qualify under that federal program or a state setup program, we could maybe step in and fill that gap, you know, assuming they meet certain income parameters and all that. So any of those gaps that exist, we could help fill that. And then the last thing is coordination with our local partners. Again, you saw that the Washington County is getting about $117 million. Some of our neighboring jurisdictions are also be going to getting a lot of money. The school district is getting quite a bit of money. We're all going to be wanting to do same things, so it just made sense to coordinate so that we're not tripping over each other. We're not overtaxing some of our nonprofits or providers that we rely on. And just make sure that our programs are coordinated. And we've already started that process. I'll talk a little bit about that. Next slide, please. So again, our equity statement, I won't read through the whole thing, but one of the things that we wanted to make sure that each specific project that we identify here in this, in this ARPA plan has some link to our equity statement. We have said this is important. Let's put that into the plan and show how we're measuring it. Next slide. Again, our council guiding principles, we went, just went through these. We were fortunate enough under the goals, which I'll touch on next, that we had a fresh look at this to maybe inform how we get out of, out of the pandemic. Next slide. Under our city council priorities, as you are all aware, COVID-19 response and recovery was key. These fit perfectly into the ARPA guidance and the intent of the ARPA money. The direct ones, obviously, are the COVID-19 response and recovery related goals, but also the racial equity goals. How can we continue utilizing an equity lens and institutionalizing equity in how we develop the ARPA programs and projects? Next slide. And these are some of the other areas. I won't go through each one of them, but highlight being one of those areas. The other area under economic development, which was expanding workforce training and internship opportunities. And the last one, which was pretty important to the council during, during our retreat, was community engagement. And we'll talk about specifically how we're going to do that. Next slide. So as part of our coordination efforts, we obviously wanted to know what the state, the county, the school, the school district is doing. And so far, the state has released their guidance on how they plan on spending their money. They're within these 10 areas. We'll obviously be getting more information, but we haven't seen, seen that come up yet. I won't go through this in detail, just in the interest of time. Next slide. Here's where I think we were going to see a lot of opportunity. So we are working, we have been meeting with the county over the last couple of months, just to see what are they planning to do? What are, what are their areas that are, that they're focusing on? And for obvious reasons, their primary area for focus is going to be protecting public health. They plan on taking their, their plan to their commission on June 22nd. We had an initial meeting with the school, school district last week, and we actually have one tomorrow with them to just start talking a little bit more about some of the workforce development programs. And we'll, we'll start fleshing those out together. And the county is going to be setting up a countywide coordination team that includes cities and special districts. We haven't seen what that structure looks like yet, but that should be coming. And again, the goal in this area is just to strengthen and solidify partnerships, just to make sure we're not tripping over each other and we're not duplicating efforts. Next slide. So here's, here's the meat of our plan. Our framework is basically set around those six areas you see on the slide, but they're all grounded on the ARPA guidance first, because if it's not, we can't use the money for it. Our council's equity statement, guiding principles and priorities. But again, is informed by community engagement. The areas that we were looking at putting those projects into, which we're referring to as our program areas, are community-based organizations and nonprofits, homelessness, workforce development, small business support, broadband, broadband access beyond just highlight and the general category under other. Next slide, please. So what does the community-based organizations and community engagement area look like? It's basically two parts. So the first part is, right off the bat, we want to hold two different tracts of community engagement sessions. And we will be relying a lot on our partners to help set these up and run these. Basically, just asking the community, what is the need? What are you seeing out there as individuals, as businesses? Holding those engagement sessions, getting that feedback and then start developing some more tailored programs or projects that are not included in some of the other things that I'll talk about in a few minutes. And then the second part of it is just direct allocations. You know, there's a need in the community. I can fill it through my, the work my nonprofit does or my organization does have some type of grant process for them to help fill that, fill that gap. And again, a lot of these details, I should have premised this before I went through the, through this slide. We are working on the specificity in those project plans and you'll see what a template of that project plan looks like at the end. Next slide, please. So under supporting our houseless population, we're thinking about three specific areas here. You know, shelter support and capital investments. What can we do to help some of our houseless members of our community? In partnership, obviously, with the county, we will be seeing some of that money coming in from the metro supporting housing services. How do these two things line up and how could we leverage each other? Community cleanup projects. There are areas around our town that we do need to clean up for whatever reason, and we could use some of this funding for that. The other area is support and expand existing community-based organization or nonprofit programs. We've got some amazing providers out there who are doing some great work. They just need a little bit more help and that's where we can step in. Under workforce development, and I won't go through each one of these, because again, these are still being developed, still in draft form. But this area provides a great opportunity for partnerships with the school district. And that's where going to be the focus of our discussion tomorrow when we meet with them. But again, expanding and creating apprenticeship programs, creating educational pathways, deliverable wage careers, specific projects that would do this. The other thing in here that I wanted to highlight was also early childcare workforce pipeline partnerships. This ties back to one of the council's goals about helping in the childcare arena post-pandemic. While that specific project may not see immediate results, it will help us in the long run to make sure there's childcare providers out there beyond what exists today. Next slide. So under improving broadband access, a couple of things in this particular area, obviously, expanding highlight. The area you see in red is kind of phase two of the Shoe Park area. I think the council just approved the contract for one B, either last, the last meeting or the one before that. This would just get that area in red online quicker. We have to get people out there, building, building basically the, the networks to each house. But beyond that, we were thinking, why not just waive all the residential connection fees? If we want people to sign up for this, you know, we're not in the business to make money. We're in the business to make sure people have cost-effective, you know, good wifi service or internet service. So why not just waive the fees for three years, which is the duration of the ARPA program? The other thing we were thinking, under the umbrella of improving broadband access, was, you know, just expand wifi devices and laptop checkouts at the Hillsborough Library. There may be some folks who might not have access at their home. They could check them out there. And then, at the library itself, some digital access and technology improvements. People could use more facilities at the library. The next one is kind of a package with some of the other things you're seeing. So providing internet access devices. These are laptops, tablets, all those types of things that, you know, some folks might not just have. And that's one of the reasons why they can't access the internet. But at the same time, also expanding digital literacy training. We could have a situation where somebody who signed up for a digital literacy training class is assigned a free laptop and then given information for either highlight or the bridge program, just kind of packaging these things up. Next slide. Under our small business support, we were looking at some type of small revolving loan fund where it could help some businesses get back on their feet, expanding tenant, tenant and storefront grants and business resource center support. Again, this is a prime area for partnerships with the county and the state and will be part of our coordination efforts. And here again, highlight shows up, waiving connection fees for small businesses. We've already started doing that, so we could just expand on that. And again, we have the opportunity to do this for three years. And then, under other, this is kind of the catch-all. So some of the things we were thinking about in this particular area was innovative community benefit programs specifically focused on COVID-19 recovery. We have to tie it back to the ARPA guidance. So even if it's a small little project that may help us recover from, from the pandemic, similar to maybe something like a Lightopia, but a Lightopia Lite that gets the community out there, interacting with each other safely. That could possibly be funded under this. Childcare provider assessment and grants. This was a key one that the council highlighted during our 2021 goals. And then, utility rent relief gaps, kind of the example that I spoke to earlier. And then the last one, revenue replacement for COVID-19 recovery. We've been fortunate to not be as damaged, I guess, as some of the other municipalities because of being smart on how we manage our financial resources. And we feel like it might be a good opportunity to put some money aside, at least for these three years, in case we see unintended, unintended things come up. But again, a lot of these projects are still in draft. I have to give kudos to our team. This was a team effort of pulling all these together. So you can see a lot of creativity in here that's come from the rest of this team. And then, let me go to the next slide for a second. And so, each project plan, so each of those individual things you saw, will have this as the back. So basically, I'll talk about what's the goal of that specific project? What's the program area? How does it link to the principles and priorities and who is the staff lead? But what is the scope of the, for the project? And part of this, again, talking about equity and how are we including equity into our project? Operationalizing it. I think somebody's unmuted accidentally. How are we operationalizing equity? So this is where it comes in, is how will this specific project help address disparities that exist for Hillsborough's BIPOC community? Here's where it actually shows up within the project. And again, in the deliverables and outcomes, we are going to be putting these together again. They're still in draft. We still have a little bit of work to do. And what assumptions are we making about the community needs? Tying back to some of the community engagement, we want to hear from the community before we go in and start doing projects that might not be what the community wants. And then, when we start putting together a list of stakeholders, you know, it's important for us to know who we are inadvertently leaving out. How does equity show up? And I think we're, we've tried to incorporate into this, into the plans and it'll be more informed as we do the community engagement. Next slide. So here's, here's the money part. So I think this toll is up to $18 million. I forgot to do the math, but generally here, the areas we're looking at and the dollar amounts, we're kind of assigning to each area. One of the reasons why you don't see as much in workforce development and small business support is because these areas are prime for partnerships with our partners over at the school board, at the school district and at the county and at the state. So we factored that in there. You know, the total project might be, let's say, $500,000. Our contribution may be just $250,000. So we still have to work through a lot of that. And then, just next slide, please. An example of what like the community engaged, community-based organizations area looks like. This is just an example, again, still in draft. So our intent would be, under one, which is the CBOs and nonprofit side, is just start the engagement now, right after we've had this discussion. Go out, ask the community what their needs are. At the same time, as we start hearing what those needs are, those will start informing some of the other project areas you're seeing. So if they're saying, look, Eric, we have more of a broadband access need, we can adjust. If we don't have as much of a need for wifi devices at the library, we can adjust. If we don't have as much of a need for wifi devices at the library, we can adjust. And then at the same time, issue grants in, in tranches along the way. So this is just an example of a schedule of what it would look like when we actually implement things. Next slide. So just giving you an overall timeline, um, the, the ARPA was signed into law on March 11th. We developed a draft framework around that time. Between then and, and today, we've been, uh, meeting with the county, um, seeing what their plans are, uh, working internally to, to just develop those projects you saw. And after we meet with you today, and you know, if you, if this approach is palatable, we would begin our community engagement process, um, develop communication platforms. We already have a website stood up, we'll start populating with more information. But, but equally important is more coordination with the school district and the county, just to make sure we're aligned as we move forward. And then just monitor, adapt and report out to the council as we move forward. And next slide, I think that is it. So any questions, comments?
I have a question. This is councillor Roletto, can you hear me okay?
Sure can, go ahead councillor.
Um, this looks great, thank you. Um, it's, it's daunting and exciting at the same time, though, when you, when you look at it. Um, I think it goes without saying, the biggest lesson we've learned over this last year as a community has been the communication piece. Is there a more of a framework as to how that can roll out? Like a pattern, a framework, a culturally relevant, something depending on what communities you're working with? Just because like, I guess I'm just wondering like whoever's leading the project, will they have their own communication plan? Or does the communication part department work closely with them or like, how is that gonna work, do you think?
Yeah, that, that's an excellent question and it's something that we're, we're trying to figure out too. So that's, um, as, as we start the, the community engagement process, we have to have one voice as a city. They're not going to be independent voices. That's something that we have to work on frankly. We, our intent is to hire facilitators to help us with that community engagement process. Just because, I mean, for, for various reasons. But that scope of work and that project plan on how that would happen, we're still refining that right now.
Rahim, if I, maybe I'll just add to, um, we have talked already, Patrick Preston has been involved, uh, as, as we've gone through this so that this initial framework, we can get out, um, fairly quickly, uh, at a broad level. And then over the next, you know, we have, I think about three and a half years that we'll be spending this money. Uh, we just need to figure out then when to communicate about what specific projects, how to do that engagement. So we, we do have some work to do, like Rahim said, but we do have a plan for the initial outreach to the community. Pretty quick about, um, just letting the community know that we have this framework, uh, ready to go. And these are the specific areas of.
Yeah, I think we've gotten better with the what and when. I think the part that we're still learning is the how. So it's just that how part. What can we do that's different than we haven't done before, or we see our CBOs doing that is successful?
And to your point councillor Roletto, that's what we need help with. And we will be reaching out to, to folks who are more skilled in doing that and hopefully use it as a learning opportunity.
I'm going to jump in here real quick. So I really liked the, the presentation and I like all of the different ideas that were laid out. Uh, I think one of I, where I take issue is really on that slide that you had where the money was divided up. I think too much of it is frankly going to the community-based organizations and homelessness. It's about 11 million of the 18 million or nine to 11, something like that. If you, if you put $5 million on the table and ask nonprofits if they can spend it, they're going to say yes. You know, one of my concerns is that these are one-time funds, right? So after three years, this money's gone. And these nonprofits often are still going to need that help. And so where it's going to come from is it's going to come from future general fund obligations that would normally be spent in other ways at the city. So that's one of my concerns. I would much more prefer the bulk of the funding be spent on capital projects and things where we can invest in them, there's no long-term, uh, or assumed long-term commitment. Um, and we get higher payoff. So especially broadband and highlight, I think tha- that issue is excellent because if we were to put forward a funding strategy of using this money, gain share, SIP financing and build out the highlight network in three years as opposed to 10 years. The significant financial impact that would have on every single person that uses highlight within the city of Hillsborough would be huge, right? I mean, that's saving them like $50 a month, every single month. You know, so I think there's a lot of benefit there. The other benefit too is that, uh, technology is only useful when people can utilize it. So if we wait 10 years to get that technology to people, it may be obsolete. They were not benefiting from that, um, between now and then. So I'd much rather see investments into, um, you know, capital projects, uh, than one-time uses or grants. One exception I do like for, uh, business support, the loan, the revolving loan program. I think that does make sense because then that gets replenished when the businesses pay them back. So I'll pause there.
And councillor Allen, just, um, uh, on the highlight, uh, expediting highlight, we will be bringing some op- options to the council later this year to, to look at what, what could some scenarios look like? And again, we could pivot over time if we needed to.
And I, I would add too on that, um, specifically in regards to homelessness, I, I, I certainly understand the concerns. I think with homelessness, um, at least a part of that funding would, could certainly be used for capital investments. Cause I agree, we don't want to necessarily use all these dollars on things that are just going to be eaten up in, in kind of annual operations. But we do have a lot of capital investments to be made, uh, in Hillsborough. That was specifically one of the council's goals. And so I think there's some good ties there for long-term capital investments that will help address homelessness as well.
I agree. And one thing I didn't mention was workforce development, that center of excellence, right? I mean, if we can improve people's ability now to get out there, uh, earn higher incomes and, you know, deliver on their own needs. I think that's a great investment for our future, that'll pay off dividend.
Councillor.
Yes, um, thanks for the presentation and Ian Rahim. One of the things with, um, what you have mentioned about our equity is that, um, I feel like we're at a very 10,000 foot level right now, looking at what we're going to do with this funding. And we're just sort of assuming of how, um, these things are going to meet. And I would say it would be helpful to see, uh, specific examples of what it is, what it is that we're meeting and how are you measuring that? Um, and so provide examples of how projects and programs are meaning C O H S equity commitments. And so maybe one of those, can we be, um, a little more flexible on permits for small businesses? Can we reduce costs? Can we reduce the waiting time that, uh, somebody has to get a permit? Just that process, can we reduce some of those barriers? And then, uh, you mentioned that staff were already thinking of some things and that we're waiting for a community input on how to use DARPA findings. What are staff anticipating? And how, and, and I, and I'm also asking you about the funding that you showed because I want to know what those amounts are going to change. How do we know that all that funding should be dedicated in all of those areas? And, and is that based on what staff are developing?
So let me, uh, try and address the first part councillor, I think, um, about the specificity and how it relates to our equity goals and what we've talked about. We're still working through that. And the purpose of the presentation today was to give you that 10,000 foot view. Just to make sure at least you were in line with our, we were in line with the approach that you thought we should go down. And that was the intent of the presentation today. If that is a yes, we would go back and start defining those specific things. So again, more to come on that and we will, we will definitely share what those project plans look like.
Yeah, I, I just, I feel that, um, yes, at the 10,000 foot level, it's important. But I, I feel like we, that's, um, the equity part isn't from one area that we can afford. Be vague and general about, because, you know, what if we don't live up to it? You know, I, I'm, I'm just asking a little bit more discretion, a little bit more defining of what that means and how it meets our goals for equity in the city.
And, and I think we're in line with that too. And that will be encompassed in the project plans when we, when we finalize them. So we'll make sure to, to, to give the council a, a copy of it. The second part councillor, um, I forgot the specificity of your question. I was wondering if you could help me. Uh, you're on mute.
That had to do with small businesses. And, and, and what we can do to be more equitable with small businesses are developing. And I, I guess I'm asking about the funding. Is that going to stay the same? Is it going to change? Is it going to be flexible? Can we be flexible in the way that we're trying to support small businesses?
I, I think the answer to all of those is yes. You know, the, that's why you see on the slide that we presented, it's just a range, right? This is based on what we think today. But as we go out and ask the community about what are their priorities? Again, remember we only have the first tranche of the money, right? We don't have the second tranche of the money. So even if we wanted to spend the $18 million today, we couldn't. So it gives us a little bit of time, we have till the end of 2024 to spend this money. So we can be thoughtful about how these buckets of money move around.
I would also add just really quick, um, I know, uh, that the chamber was mentioned as being a really important partner, specifically about small business. They've been doing some great work about doing outreach and surveying and finding out what it is that businesses need right now. Businesses' needs today are probably very different than they were one year ago, right? At the beginning of the pandemic. And so that's where we can really solicit that input from places like the chamber and, and others to actually figure out, okay, this is how they need it and this is how we can spend it. So I think we definitely have that flexibility. We just know that's an area that the council wants us to focus on. And then we're going to work with the chamber and others to try to figure out exactly how to kind of tailor that funding.
And councillor, I'll carry on your last point about the timeliness of permit reviews and all that. I know our, our community development team has been working quite a bit on process improvements. So regardless of ARPA money or not, I think that's something that we're already striving to do. And, uh, we've made some improvements and I think we have a couple more programs to help with that process.
Okay, thank you Rahim.
Councillor Pace.
Thank you Mayor Callaway, uh, thank you Rahim and Andy for this briefing. I appreciate the 10,000 foot view and the fact that you have to get ranges first, you have to start somewhere, right? And I appreciate that very much. As we move forward, I would encourage us, uh, encourage you as you're working on this, on a few things. First, yes, we need improvement in communication and getting input, um, and working on DEI. And I think that we've made some strides, especially in the small business grants that we made during COVID. I know we're still in it, but in the beginning of COVID where there was an eye on not only small businesses, but women-owned businesses, BIPOC-owned businesses. So I think that that is excellent and let's keep going with that. To councillor Allen's point of nonprofits, yeah, I, I hear you my friend. As far as like giving a nonprofit a lot of money, they, they do a buildup of hiring staff to do work and then that money diminishes. Ideally, two things happen. They get money from somewhere else or the need diminishes. And you and I both know that the need probably won't diminish, but it gives the nonprofit time to show proof of efficacy and allows them to get other funding. So hopefully that will happen. And the last thing on communication with councillor Roletto's point. Something I've seen over and over again, and it happened with homeless and it happened with vaccines. The thing that works is one-to-one personal contact. And it, I've seen it, we, we've seen that be effective, especially for certain communities. And that takes a, a lot of investment to get a person, a lot of them, train them and then send them out, right? And, but I think we might need to do that. I think some of our funding may be well-invested in that area. And so I would encourage as we're investigating ways to do better communication, not just over email, not just mailers, not just reader boards, but in-person communication, that we make that investment. And, and what I'm thinking of is sort of like a census kind of thing, how the census hires people. They go door to door, they do their thing and then they're done. But I've heard it over and over again, personally, as I'm talking to constituents and as I'm talking to other organizations that say the one-to-one is effective, but it costs a lot in the beginning. But I think it's worth it. So I just encourage us to do that on the communication. Thank you again for, for breaking this down and already being mindful of working with partners and also the DEI and our guiding principles. I so appreciate that, thank you.
Councillor Pace, just to provide a little more, uh, information on the, the outreach. So the first bucket I think was about $200,000 to start the engagement process. So to your point, you know, it would help fund that boots-on-the-ground approach, to be able to get out there. So that could be incorporated into our scope.
Yeah, I, I think, okay, I, I do think it'd be worth the investment. I'm glad that you've already put that aside. So thank you for considering that, I think it'll make a difference.
Councillor Pace, I have a question. So, um, organizations like, um, Community Action did a lot of work. And in coordination with, um, culturally-based organizations, so Centro Cultural, Bienestar. So they all work together. I, um, I'm wondering that if they get funding, that they get the type of funding that they would need to be effective in their programs. And so, um, we've already given funding over this year during COVID. And so I would, um, like to give funding for things that they would do that are, um, continuing to give service, but maybe something innovative that they can do. And if we can throw in some funding that fits to support whatever changes that they think should be made, that they're more effective and more efficient in the way that they're meaning community need. So that's, I'm wondering about that for community-based organizations and I don't know if they're getting too much. I think we have to decide like on what work that they do that we want them to do. Like if, um, not all organizations are doing things with homeless. But you know, Community Action does a lot of work. And so they're all serving people in the community differently, but not all at the same level. But still the needs are all there. So I think it's important to really examine community-based organizations and the work that they're going to do.
I agree, was there a question?
No, I think I just wanted to have a comment.
Okay, I, I agree that, um, you know, they can inform us, absolutely. I wasn't in any way advocating for diminished investment in CBOs or NPOs.
Councillor, looks, councillor Martin.
Howdy. Okay, well, first off, thank you all so much staff. I think it's a great foundation, looking at equity, looking at our guiding priorities, looking at council priorities. I think that's a great foundation. I, uh, completely echo councillor Roletto's speech, uh, councillor Pace, councillor Al cares about community engagement. That's incredibly important, uh, and making sure that everyone feels heard, uh, even if, uh, one specific project doesn't get there. Um, I also agree with councillor Alan about wanting to focus on capital items, uh, you know, things we can touch. You know, I think we, we have game share that we use to try, uh, our, our goal with game share money is to always have something we can touch as an out, out, output. Uh, and I'm not saying that we use that as the primary rule here, but I, I do think it's important to focus on capital needs. And on the operating side, on the kind of grants or things that we give to folks, having some amount of weighing internally of, is this something? If it goes well, do we intend to continue? What's the funding stream that we have after this federal funding runs out? That we are willing to continue and step up and help our community to continue increasing, uh, support? I think it's really important that we take a mind at that and, and really realize what our, think about what our role is in providing social services and things that the city has not before partnered with, but are clear needs in our community. So I, I think that we can use this funding as a jumping off point to really think about that's how we're providing service to, uh, residents in Hillsborough. to residents in Hillsborough. I think the business resource centers are a great opportunity and outreach with the business community is great. I, I like the idea of moving quickly for a first round of funding and then making sure that we're aware that we have time on the clock before spending everything, making sure all of our needs, we're correctly assessing our needs. I think that makes total sense. I did have a couple of questions. I was a little confused about why the community-based organizations nonprofits is its own separate funding stream. And the reason why is because let's say Home Plate comes to us and asks for a grant to help out our houseless population. Would that be something that goes in the home, houseless bucket or the community-based organization bucket? And, and I ask this because it seems like that is really a bucket that's going to affect other needs. Am I right? Or is this more of capacity building internally for these? I have a couple of other questions, but I'll start there.
Sure. So yeah, on that point, it is, it is somewhat ambiguous, right? Because one of, just let me step back for a second. Where we wanted to present here was just the overall approach, right? And then start getting more into the specificity and purposely stay at that 10,000 foot level. So we didn't get too far along and then have to move back. But to use your specific example, counselor, if Home Plate came to us, once we started this project, it could be either or, or both, depending on what, what that project specifically is. And one thing to just mention, it has to be tied back to the A R P A guidance, right? I mean, they, there are things that we would love to see that are part of our council priorities or, 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 you know, things that we said we wanted to do. But if it doesn't meet that guidance, we can't spend the A R P A funds on it. So I just wanted to mention that.
No, for sure. I, I think what that shows me is just that that community-based organizations nonprofit is a pot of money that will also go to address the other things that are there, rather than being a kind of separate. It, it seems like it's one of those things that applies to every other category because the other categories are policy or issue-based. Whereas this one is more about how much we intend to give to groups that support those issues. And I wanted to just make clear that that's one where that funding flows to other things. I wanted to make sure of that. One of the things you talked about in the other category was innovative community benefit programs for COVID recovery. And you gave a high-level example, but I didn't really fully understand, like what does that mean?
Yeah. So let's, a perfect example is if we had to do Littopia again, right? So to help the community get back out, help with that community psyche. Because that was similar to the psyche granted, it was funded through, that could be an example of a project. Another project that could possibly come under here are like events that we want to pop up in the community. So let's say subsidizing a portion of a farmer's market or an event so that people aren't paying that much money to be able to attend it. Again, it has to be, here's the trick, the tricky part is it has to be tied to COVID recovery. So we still have to flesh that out a little bit more.
No, Littopia was a great example. That's a better way to couch it. I was just having trouble visualizing what that meant. Under the other as well, you know, and I really appreciate staff saying this, of the revenue replacement for COVID recovery. I, I think that, you know, this is why we have a rainy day fund. This is the point to use it. And I'm not sure that we should be using, I think we should be using this money to benefit our community members, residents, businesses as much as possible, recognizing that we've put ourselves in a strong financial position to be able to absorb this blow and keep moving forward. So I, I, I know Rahim, you had talked about kind of making, there was kind of two temporal, sorry, there were two time-based things. The first is, no, we don't want to use all the money at once. Hundred percent agree with you there. And then the second is wanting to make sure, I would rather this go out and benefit the community rather than replace forgone revenue from the city during COVID. So that's, that's the distinction I wanted to make, that I, I think that's what you said, but I wanted to confirm.
Yes, and so the.
And please tell me if I was confusing.
Yeah. So the revenue replacement to your point, counselor. And I think Robbie, you had mentioned this quite a bit too, that we wanted to get this money back out into the community is for that duration of the A R P A funds. So again, if things come up that we didn't know about or unintended things happen, we have at least a pot within the A R P A funding till the end of 2024 to be able to use that.
That's perfect. Thank you. That's exactly what I was hoping for. And my final question, you talked about expanding Wi-Fi devices. And this is an ignorant question, that includes hotspots as well, right?
Yes, sorry. I should have been more specific, the, the hotspots.
Perfect. I just wanted to make a hundred percent sure that hotspots are on there. Beyond that 10,000 foot level, this is fantastic. The ideas proposed are great and I'm really looking forward to hear how the community feels about this and making sure that everyone has buy-in and that we're really making people recover from this intense crisis and trauma we faced over the past.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Counselor Ben Beveren, any, any comments or questions?
No, it's a thoughtful discussion and I appreciate, you know, all that other counselors have said and suggested. I'd like to have a little more time to think about this deeply. And one, one area that I'm a little bit concerned about is there are so many different funding streams, you know, from the federal government, from the state, Washington County, you know, nonprofits and that sort of thing. I wonder how we can get to those people that haven't been able to take advantage of some of those. I mean, there are some that have had a lot of support, let's say, or have been able to get a lot of support from the various funding sources and others that I, I, I'm quite certain are frustrated because they fell through the cracks somehow in, in, in the complexity of the support that's been offered or accessing it. So that would be, that'd be a tough thing to do, but it might, it's, it's a concern I have. So other than that, it's been a great discussion. Really appreciate the presentation and, and kicking this off with 10,000 foot view.
Thanks, Counselor. And Council President Allen, you kind of started us off. Is there any, anything you want to, as we circle back and then I'll jump in after you?
No, like, like Ben Reverend said, I mean, it's been a good conversation, I think, by everybody. I did see that Beech raised her hand real quick, so I will allot my time to her if she'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Thank you. Weird question. Would we and are we able to use this, some of the investment toward, I don't know, more futuristic investment? So for example, we were recently talking about a homeless, a temporary homeless camp, right? To have, to house homeless just for a bit. Would we be able to, and I, I don't want to open a Pandora's box here, but start a permanent housing for, for homeless, right? Could we use some of the funds for permanent housing for homeless that could last? And we could make that investment, not just for now, in a reactionary way, but in a getting ready for the future kind of way. And I know this is for COVID recovery and that is COVID recovery, but in a much more lasting way.
Maybe I can take that one, Rahim, absolutely. And, and maybe, you know, I, I think it was in response to Counselor Allen. I think what we'd like to do, especially with homelessness, is identify ways to look at more long-term capital type of programs. So Counselor Pace, to your, your point exactly, there's a lot of examples in the region of cities that have tried different things. Some have been successful, some have not. But we believe that this funding can be used in several of those types of cases. And so we're in the process now, you're all familiar with the Wood Street project that we're working on now. That's certainly more temporary, but something more long-lasting that, that we have. You know, the city of Hillsborough does not have a shelter right now, a city-owned shelter that we could partner with our nonprofits. So we are having active discussions about how to do that, where to do that, you know, when to do that. And these funds, we believe are, can be, can definitely be used on those types of projects that will have a long-lasting effect on homelessness.
Thank you.
And Robbie, I, I could just, just say that I think generally that the funding is intended to provide both immediate relief and address the immediate harms of the pandemic, but also to address and mitigate its longer-term and compounding impacts. The systemic public health impacts and the systemic impacts related to economic challenges and specifically for disproportionately impacted communities.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Great, great discussion, great comments. You know, one of the things that I have said over this last, you know, 14 months is that, you know, the, the pandemic didn't create inequities, but it really exacerbated inequities and it revealed inequities. And so now that we have learned where those inequities are, I really want to make sure that, that that's also kind of in the forefront. So I appreciate, you know, the, the framework through which so much of the plan has been created because I feel like those inequities are being attended to. And you know, and I'll just use an example with highlight, when vaccinations were available and yet those who were the highest priorities in terms of elderly, so many of them didn't even know how to use, you know, the, the computer to access it. And, you know, and we saw stories, national news stories about young, young people, you know, stepping in to make sure that older people, you know, were able to get appointments. And so I love, I love the digital, digital literacy idea. I think that, you know, we've seen that that is as important for our senior citizens as it is for our young students and, and many folks in between. You know, the, 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 the community service providers are nonprofits. You know, as I think about the three years, it reminds me of the impact grants that we have. And that may be a good framework if, you know, as we look to see how can we support, you know, our, our nonprofit providers. You know, what can they come and show us that could be a three-year, a, a three-year program, if you will, that by the end of three years is up and running on its own? Or will have addressed the problem enough that, and I, and I, you know, Counselor Pace, your, your words echo, you know, knowing that most needs aren't going away within three years. But if there's something that can be done, you know, then at the end of 24, when the money is gone, you know, then hopefully, you know, there's been a bit of a glide path so that it's not feeling or looking like a cliff in terms of those, those programs. One of the other things, and, and I guess this is, this is where there is a question. You know, when I did, you know, conversations with, you know, a number of different sectors within our community, one of the things that we heard from our business was what was important for support and critical for support in May of, you know, 2020 was not necessarily the same thing that was essential for support and survival, you know, months later. And so is recognizing then that this is a, you know, a three, a three-year, four-year program. Is it possible that as we do the community outreach, that we have continued and ongoing community outreach so that we are able to be nimble in meeting the needs of our business for all of those priorities within, you know, within the priority areas? And maybe that would lend itself to setting up some task forces, you know, that would be a part of, you know, touch points, you know, throughout, throughout this time. So that, you know, it's predictable in terms of how we're communicating, when we're communicating, the feedback that we're getting, you know, because I think that, you know, meets, you know, Counselor Al care, you know, in terms of how are we reaching out ongoing, you know, because we, you know, yet it's not just a one-way conversation, but it's a two-way conversation and it's a two-way conversation that goes on for, you know, for quite a while. So my question is, you know, can we make sure that we're communicating long-term, potentially set up task force or some other mechanism to make sure that that communication take place?
So, so Mayor Callaway, I'm glad you actually highlighted that because that was our plan. If you, if you, if I go back to the slide that showed the example of the timeline, the community engagement part, the first thing we would do continues all the way till the end. And it didn't go beyond the three years because we were just showing the three years for the, the ARPA project. But that was our intent. We didn't want to just come in and then leave and then not show up again. Our goal was to continuously be there throughout the duration of this. And to your point, I think building up those partnerships and at the same time developing our, you know, the engagement framework that we had talked about during our council priorities, all of those things coming together. So in short, yes, that is part of the plan.
Great. Thank you for that.